Good evening. It's, what, three minutes after seven? And so we have no line out front, which is a little bit unusual for a meeting around here, because we usually have lines. So I would like to call the meeting to order and introduce to you the board who's here. I'm President of the Board, Scott Carrier. We have Jerry Bauer as Vice President. Nancy Rogers is Secretary. Seated next to her is Tricia Morris as Treasurer, and Dan Castle, seated over here next to Jerry. Rita is our Executive Director, and she is here. Also present this evening is Randy Lipschutz, who is sitting here next to me, and our independent auditors, who will count the ballots and make sure everything is squared the way it should be, is Jeff Fulton, and his compatriot here, Carlos Naranjo, from Fulton and Cozak, who are here, as I said, to count the votes. Let's begin the meeting officially. And Madam Secretary, was proper proof of notice given for this meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Secretary, is a quorum present either in person or by proxy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Could we have a breakdown of the proxy versus present, please?
The... We have 134 proxies, and 102 have picked up ballots. The order of business shall be as stated in the letter that was sent to everyone. Other business will have to wait until the regularly scheduled meeting on June 26. A special meeting of the members of the Mount Vernon Towers condominium association was called by resolution of the Board of Directors. I make a motion for the members of the association to vote to remove Mr. Dan Castle as a member of the Board of Directors. Is there a second?
I second.
Is there discussion? All in favor of this motion?
That's after...
That's after we do the... Right, okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. We have a vote on this. We have aye, all in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have a vote that is four to zero. Apparently, Mr. Castle is going to abstain.
I have a proposal, Mr. Chairman, that could shorten the meeting.
I hope you're not going to give us a session on why we should not have the meeting.
I have a proposal, Mr. Chairman. Can I make the proposal?
Go ahead, make your proposal.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Back on?
My name is Dan Castle. The subject of tonight's meeting, I received three nasty messages telling me to resign, and one friend that called me, and we had a very adult discussion about it. If I resign, you need to know that, first of all, I would not be allowed to respond to the charges that have been made against me. So that's why I proceeded to come to tonight. Also, if I resign, the board gets to pick my replacement by themselves without your involvement. If you know anything about me, it's that I have...
Dan, this is out of order, because you were going into the presentation that is scheduled to come forth after, in a little bit now, so let's hold this.
I have a proposal to make that could shorten the meeting if you don't want to hear it.
Let's hear the proposal without all the introduction.
These people need to understand why I have chosen not to resign, so they would get to pick it.
Well, you have plenty of opportunity to do that later, and we can get to the vote.
The proposal is that I'm prepared to resign and shorten the meeting under two conditions. One is that I get to respond to the charges, which I will get to do if we go through the procedure anyway. The second is that Brian Greenberg gets appointed to be my replacement. Brian has over four years' experience on the board. He has a lot of experience in financing, which this board really needs. And you all know that Brian and I have not seen eye to eye on a lot of things, but clearly, he is a guy that can add to the value of the board. So if the board is willing to accept those conditions, I am willing to resign. If not, we'll proceed.
We cannot accept those conditions without Brian's concurrence at all. And I have not seen Brian Greenberg here tonight.
Right, he's out of town.
So we cannot accept those conditions, because Brian has to agree to them first. So let's move on, then. So we're not gonna... The idea is not to hold a debate tonight. So I make a motion to allow Dan Castle, as well as other members of the Board of Directors, to speak and have a time limit of 10 minutes, along with a maximum of 20 minutes to the floor for questions and statements, with a maximum of two minutes per member of the floor. Should we need to move to elect a new director, each candidate will have five minutes to speak, with a maximum of 10 minutes for floor questions to the candidates. Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second it.
Second, Jerry. Those in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Aye, aye. All right. Madam Secretary, will you summarize the information sent to the members, explain why the board voted four to zero to recommend the removal of Mr. Castle from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Earlier this month, the MVT Board of Directors made the difficult decision to initiate the process to remove a fellow board member. The executive board voted on the motion to call a meeting of the members to remove Mr. Dan Castle by a four to zero vote. Mr. Castle was notified of the meeting and chose not to attend or discuss the motion. He received the minutes of the meeting later that day. He also received the packet sent to all owners. The process leading to this special meeting of the HOA members followed our bylaws and legal advice. A productive working environment is essential for our MVT Board to effectively serve the community. Mr. Castle's behavior has made it extremely difficult to have meaningful discussion or reach consensus. Given the situation, the three resident board members realized unfortunately that as volunteers, their best option would be to resign. Here are the reasons. Mr. Castle has ignored the oath of office and code of conduct signed by board members, which acknowledges shared responsibility and conduct during and after service. He consistently did not give respect and fair consideration to opposing views, did not prepare for meetings, and challenged the authority of administration. His unwillingness to accept well-established bylaws, financial procedures, employment practices, and operational procedures led to multiple three- to four-hour meetings to address his agenda items. In the first month of service, this resulted in legal fees of $6,000. When asked not to independently query staff, Mr. Castle persisted in pursuing his own objectives. Staff members expressed feeling uncomfortable due to questions asked of them that did not relate to his ownership of a unit. Additionally, some staff members felt wrongfully interrogated concerning their ability and credentials to perform their duties. The board is concerned that these actions could expose MVT to liability if they continue. Mr. Castle's lack of consideration for priorities and workload demands remains unreasonable. As one example, he recently requested other work to be deferred to provide him with 25 years of board meeting minutes. His ongoing personal attacks have placed unwarranted stress on other board members' mental health and well-being, creating a toxic environment that hinders productivity. His written and verbal interactions include personal criticism, patronizing comments, and belittling statements about board member capabilities. A common practice is to take part of a statement and distort the information or intent, and then react critically to a position that was never expressed. In summary, his belligerent behavior toward board members and staff has become detrimental to MVT. This hostile environment has eroded trust, reduced productivity, and created obstacles in making decisions. Our community is financially stable and positioned to move forward on long-deferred capital improvements in the next 18 months. We cannot allow one individual to hinder our progress. At present, three resident board members are poised to resign. This decision was not made in haste, but after months of challenging interactions. We ask you to vote for the removal of Mr. Castle.
Mr. Castle, would you like to speak to this? We have allocated 10 minutes, as you have heard a minute ago.
The bylaws do not restrict the amount of time, Mr. Chairman. I ran for the board.
The current motion did restrict the amount of time.
I ran for the board to get you involved as much as you wanted to be involved, to share all information that isn't confidential, to manage association money like it is our own, because it is. I took my responsibility as your representative very seriously. You pay $15,000 to $20,000 per year in HOA fees. You're going to be asked for well over $10,000 per condo and special assessments for projects. MVT is your $6 million company. I hope you noticed that in the recent survey, not one question was asked about how well you thought the board is managing your money, not one. That should tell you something. There's about 20 accusations in Scott's letter that was just read to you again. I'm going to ignore the mudslinging ones, except to say, most aren't true. Scott has done what he accuses me of doing, and it wasn't as one-sided as is implied, far from it. But if you want to believe all that rubbish, go ahead. I'm not going to take the bait and allow the serious matter at hand to become a food fight. But there are some accusations that must be addressed. I did reject being Treasurer. After Scott had appointed Nancy to be Treasurer, and she rejected the position, three nights later, I was elected Treasurer, according to the bylaws, not appointed. Then I read the job description in the bylaws. Your Treasury doesn't do any of the duties specified, none. They have been delegated to Rita and her staff, so no owner is involved in the handling of your $6 million. My personal attorney advised me that I would be criminally liable if something happens and advised that I refuse to be Treasurer. Further, he said, to resign from any board that would allow such dereliction of duty. I decided not to resign, but instead tried to return the control of our company to us. As part of the $6,000 in legal fees I'm accused of wasting, even Randy said, quote, "I do understand Castle's concerns, but I do think the Treasurer of the Association is properly covered for exposure absent an intentional or criminal act in violation of his duties to the Association." That's exactly what my attorney warned me about. Another big part of the $6,000 concerned the board's decision to delegate to Rita complete responsibility for all hiring and firing, contrary to the bylaws. The board, not me, used Randy to find ways to justify their decision. After he did, he stated, quote, "Delegation of such duties does not relieve the board of responsibility." Someone needs to explain to me how both can be true. I asked several times why we wouldn't want to be involved, at least for people reporting to Rita. I got no response, except when Rita was interviewing people to be her assistant, Scott got involved, contrary to what we had just decided as a board the board wasn't going to do. So things have not been going well on the board. But what they have done culminating in tonight's meeting is despicable. After we had a blow-up at a meeting, I sent Scott and Jerry a message asking for guidance. Scott responded by blaming me, as he does in the letter sent to you. There wasn't any attempt to resolve anything, no discussions, no attempt at team building, no consultations, nothing. I was blindsided, let's dump him. I did not go to the meeting where the resolution was discussed. It was already written, and I was always outvoted four to one, so why waste four hours of my life and $130 of my money to drive here for a decision already made without my involvement? The process being used to remove me is also despicable. The email from Rita was sent June 7, my birthday, and when Scott knew I was going to be out of the country. I just returned Saturday, doing this on the plane. You heard 134 people already voted by proxy without hearing from me or considering other replacement candidates. Three people on the board have anonymously threatened to resign if you don't kick me off. In other words, do what they want, or else. And the board has selected their preferred replacement without providing for you the normal nomination, evaluation, and election process. You may think this is just about me, but it is also about your control of your company. You may think this is about my personality, but it is really because they don't like to face the answers to the questions I ask. I have over 50 years in business and 10 years' experience on three other boards. I learned that boards are to provide oversight and guidance, especially on financial matters. We have a fiduciary duty to protect your money. This board apparently disagrees. In six months, we have never discussed the financial report issued at board meetings or any other financial data. Some of you heard me make a motion to hold executive board meetings every month, one week before open board meetings, to discuss last month's financial report, et cetera. Nobody would second my motion. Consensus was it would take too much time. They were too busy on other board matters. Some of you also heard me ask for a meeting to define what businesses MVT has. Again, no interest, as that would take too much time. So let's talk just about three of them, and why they are important to you. The PCC produced $171,000 in net profit in 2023, when only at half, being half-full. The board didn't want to make any effort to move more people in until projects were done, pictures were taken, brochure was made, marketing plan completed, et cetera, et cetera. But by me being fixated on it, as Tricia complained, five people were found in one month, and then more. When we get to the same 85% average capacity we had before the number of beds were reduced from 26 to 18, we should realize $300,000 in net profit. That's $1,000 per condo every year to offset your costs for HOA fees or special assignments. But Scott calls that icing. I asked where it can be spent, and did not get an answer. The T-Mobile contract. We only receive $20,000 per year for their equipment on our roof. A church in the area gets $60,000. Rita has said that it may be worth $100,000, but the contract can't be broken. Some of us aren't so sure. I asked for all board minutes from the year before Tommy Miller, who signed that contract, became the executive director to the year after he left. I guess that's the 25 years of minutes I'm wasting her time to provide. I didn't want them transcribed or read to me, just provide them. A member of the board is entitled to all records. If we are correct, that might yield another $150,000 per year. That's $500 per condo, more icing annually. The dining room. An average meal costs $20 for just labor and food, doesn't include rent, utilities, equipment, et cetera. We only charge about $12 maximum. That $8 difference times 6,000 meals per month eaten means we are losing $48,000 per month, or $600,000 per year. That's $2,000 per condo we are wasting to run an inefficient dining room. In total, that's $3,500 per condo, per year, potential income or wasted money. That's equivalent to about 20% of your HOA fee. That's not icing to me. I want to leave you with my assessment of MVT, then you can vote me off the board. First, we react to issues rather than anticipate and prepare. No succession planning is a good example. You all have a succession plan. It's called your will. MVT should be prepared if somebody quits, gets fired, gets hurt, or anything else that can happen in life. Instead, we wait, then we scurry to react afterwards. Two, we have delegated way too much authority to the executive director. The T-Mobile, the 40-year T-Mobile contract, is a good example of a bad result. Not being involved in selecting the key staff and defining their duties is another. Paying $50,000 to the IRS without even notifying the board is yet one more. Three, we have what someone has labeled "short corporate memory" because of our age and brief time living at MVT. For example, we have no idea why the chases were modified like they were over 10 years ago, but that mistake is going to cost us $4 million. We have a garage with serious issues due to inadequate attention, including ignoring recommendations made over two years ago. So we absolutely need to hire a firm experienced in high-rise buildings to provide maintenance and engineering support, and even provide filing cabinets to keep records for us. We cannot assume we are always going to have a bunch of owners who are engineers willing to volunteer their time when the next crisis arises. Fourth, we have, we value MVT more than the market does. I have heard many times that MVT offers more than the competition for less money. That may be true, but if it is, we wouldn't have unsold or unrented condos, ever.
Dan, we're at 12 minutes now.
Do you want me to stop, or read two more lines?
Two more lines, or two more pages?
Two more. Yeah, so much for me being the one that insults. Instead, we would enjoy waiting lists like my daughter in Pennsylvania has, some with $1,000 fees, to get on them. No brochure, no website, no social media, no long overdue marketing plan is going to magically correct the situation. There's more going on that we don't understand but need to.
Ran a little over, but that's okay. I want to open the floor to any questions that people might have, or questions or comments. We've got...
Personally...
Please tell us your name, and...
My name is Kimberly Wilkinson.
And whether you're on inside...
And I am in B505.
Okay, because I want everybody to know who everybody is.
And here I am. My name's Kimberly Wilkinson, and I'm in B505.
Very good, thank you.
Personally, I do like the fact that we have an objective scenario of what we do and how we actually spend our money. That should be something that everyone should know, and we should discuss it, and not shut everybody down when they have an idea or have a question. I like it. I like it. But we're family here, and we're going to have to learn how to work together respectfully. That's my only thing. But I do agree with what he has to say. Maybe the delivery is not right, or to your liking, there's another way to actually deliver that, but I think he's on the right train.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Janice Adams in B1001. This actually is a question for the board, if I may. Based on Dan's comments just now, would any of you change your previous four to zero vote to remove him from the board?
Jerry, you want to shake your head up or down?
I stay the way we were.
You stay the same. Everybody staying, keeping their vote the same way, Janice.
Thank you, I think that's very important.
Thank you. All right. One in the back.
Hello, Howard Goldberg, owner of B503. And obviously, I did not do a proxy vote, because, as I talked about last week or so, due process, that gentleman had, you know, very well-spoken and brought up some very interesting points. Kind of looking at it as a procedural thing. Now, he brought up some issues that kind of contradicted some of the statements and concerns. Is there potential for the board to have a rebuttal? You know, like, hey, you know, if he says this scenario was actually like this, is there a potential for a rebuttal where, you know, not that we're looking for arguments back and forth, but, you know, he brought, like, as she had mentioned, he brought up some phenomenal, and, you know, at least myself as, you know, kind of unbiased outsider perspective, he brought up some phenomenal points. So I don't know if maybe, you know, a few moments if the board actually has a rebuttal, you know, or do you all agree with what he's saying and stuff like that? So, you know, I think that would probably be a good opportunity, you know, for the next part of the meeting, is to really, you know, get your perspective of his responses and, you know, see if there's any rebuttal related to that.
We started off with a comment that said we were not going to have a debate on this. So I think when you're talking rebuttal, we're basically opening the floor to a full debate on each item.
Hi, my name is Terry Stuckey, and I'm co-owner of A1014. And the email that we received, received, basically, contained a lot of complaints that seemed to be personality conflicts and accusations. Honestly, it sounds like a fourth-grade food fight to me. And I was very disappointed. I do remember the day the four and Dan were elected. This was only a few short months ago. They were all high-fiving each other. And now, I have a few questions for the board. How many proxy votes were collected based on a letter of complaints about Dan without disclosing any of the core issues that he had questions on, or giving an opportunity for him to give his side? How many proxy votes were taken prior to this meeting?
I asked that question, Terry, and it was 134, and it takes 150 to vote me off the board.
Well, this is really, I'm a realtor. I thought Mount Vernon Towers was the best place for my mother, who bought a year ago in March. And now, the lack of transparency and the way the board rushes to the hanging before having the trial, it's an embarrassment, it's a disgrace, it's unethical. Now, Dan may be obnoxious. He may be wrong. And he also is an owner of several units. And he is entitled, and every one of us who is a homeowner is entitled to receive every single minute from the Homeowner Association and all those documents. And those should be available to us upon request. They should be digital. This talk about, oh, it takes too long. My husband has been scanning documents that come into his office for over 25 years. They are scanned and stored as PDFs, or as, or as Word documents. Are those available for us in digital form?
Terry, we've gone over the two minutes allocated.
That's not acceptable.
We've gone over the two minutes allocated, Terry. And the documents, the minutes are available in the... And the documents, the minutes are available in the, in the office?
In the office, are they available digitally?
The, on the owner's portal, they're available?
No, they're not. Only the ones for the past couple of years are there.
Well...
And the board's, the letter the board sent to me said it would take a lot of time to provide 25 years of HOA minutes.
Yeah, we're going over the same ground, Terry, so...
Well, I need some answers. All of us deserve answers. We don't deserve to be pushed around by the board. You are supposed to have a fiduciary duty to us, and we are owed full transparency not to be treated like this. One other thing, who is threatening to resign?
Let's pass the microphone on, Terry.
I see you don't want to answer questions.
I am... Mr. Chairman, I'm Betsy Bunty, and my husband and I own B-403 and 405. I'd like to say, first of all, thank you to the board for your hard work. I'm confident that you are men and women of integrity, that you take your job seriously. It's a volunteer job, and I want to congratulate you on all the time that you put into this endeavor. I'm sorry that it's come to this, but I just want you to know that I'm for you and thank you for your work.
I'm Joanne Burgess, and my husband and I own a unit in A-1003. We've been here a couple of years, and this is, of course, we are all here because we feel there's a problem. I don't know if I can make a suggestion that's a legal thing and would work out well, but I want to make it and let our attorneys tell us if this is a possibility. The board is not getting done things that need to be done around here. It's very clear we are in need of things that are not happening. If the attorney for the board and the attorney for Dan Castle could sort out some of these issues, that in many cases are personality issues among the people whom we have chose to help us and to guide us economically on the way, I'd make that suggestion and leave it up to the attorneys to clear out the situation. So you tell me.
Because you addressed that to the attorneys, let me just respond from my perspective as the association's attorney. I've always been available to have Dan's attorney or any representative from Dan contact me. I haven't been contacted. I've responded to any number of written questions that Dan has had. I've, anytime, you know, that's the $6,000 they were talking about, was responding to the questions Dan had. I'm happy to respond and happy to work with Dan or his attorney. I never heard from his attorney, so it's hard for me to work with him if I don't hear from him.
I mean, you guys written something down, so why, why can't you all at least address it and answer it?
Because I have the mic. I'm sorry, this is the second time I'm up, but may I speak?
Please.
I want to say one thing. We homeowners here at Mount Vernon Towers have an election every year. At the end of last year, we voted, the five people sitting at the front of the room here, we voted them in to make the decisions that we can't make. So we put our faith in every one of them to do what is right for Mount Vernon Towers, not for me, not for my husband, and not for you. It is for everyone that lives and owns in Mount Vernon Towers. When you have a vote to remove one person at four-to-zero, then I sit back and say, there's something going on. And they have tried to explain what has gone on in a very public and a very businesslike way. We may not like Dan Castle. He was a thorn in the board's, as a previous board member last year, he was a thorn in our sides then. He continues to be a thorn in their sides as, as a board member. I thought maybe your spots would have changed, but it doesn't seem that they have. So again, we are the homeowners here, and we've put our faith in the ones that are up there, and four-to-zero vote tells me something is not right.
Hello, my name is Ann Duncan. My husband and I own Unit A-411 and 413. I have been attending the open meetings of the board this year since the new group was elected. I have heard Dan at these meetings expressing his ideas, and I have heard the responses from the board about his ideas, and it was always four-to-zero. So I'm just telling you, we need to be able to work together for the board to be able to do anything. So I'm in agreement with the person that said, we're a family here, we have to work together, we can't be difficult. So I express my appreciation to the board members who have volunteered and done so much good work for us and who we all elected.
We have one more in the back here, it looks like. No, okay. All right, we have no hands up now for the microphone, and so let's call A for the vote. Let's call the vote. Would ask you now to mark your ballots if you haven't already done so. And Susan will collect them and bring them forward. This will be for ballot number one, which is the ballot for about Mr. Castle. And Fulton and Kozak over here will go ahead and count them and verify the votes and tell us what it is in a little bit. Now, I would ask you, after you turn in your ballot, to remain in the room so we can get you an answer, and we can also, if necessary, elect another board member. Okay, may I have your attention, please? Attention. The ballots are in, counted. We have 222 for the proposal to remove Mr. Castle. We have 13 against, and we have five ballots that were abstained, marked abstained. So with that vote in, recorded, and we are in a position now where we need to elect a new member to the board. And I know, as you all know, Diana Daniels has been, has said she would serve and has offered her services. She is here tonight. Also, are there any nominations from the floor? Michael?
I want myself.
Michael wants to nominate himself. Michael McCollum is nominating himself from the board. With that said, I would like to ask each one of these, are there any others? Excuse me? Okay, with no others offering names, I would like to ask each of these to speak for a minute or two. Diana, you want to go first?
My name's Diana Daniel. I first want to say that I, I'm not good at this. Anyways, I want to say first off that, you know, I'm not happy about what went on here today. It really kind of makes me sad. But the point is, we need to get on with business and get things done. We, my husband and I discovered Mount Vernon Towers in 2011 when we were looking for a place for his mom, who ended up in Dalton. But it made such an impact that in 2019, we sold a rental house and bought our first unit here. We currently have three units. We plan on moving in one day, but we're still living in a house, and until we can't take care of it, we'll continue to live where we're living. The long-range plan is to move, oh, that's how I, what's your say? Now, when committees were recreated in 2023 after COVID, Jeff and I both joined the Architectural Committee. He is also on the Finance Committee, as well as some other committees. We're over here a lot. Some of you might know me. I think some people have thought I've lived here because I spend so much time over here, it seems. We understand what the situations are with the chases, with different things that are going on. I get along very well with the board members. I know them all. I get along well with administration, have had a lot of dealings because of the three condos that we have, and I anticipate that I would continue not to rubber stamp, but to be a little more congenial. Now, I want to kind of mention, because a lot of people have said, well, how did I, my name get put on the board? Because Dan was voted off, and he is an outside investor, we need an outside investor to take his place. I got a call. We've resisted, both Jeff and I have resisted being, running for the board in the past, but this situation was a little bit different, and I said, yes, I'd be happy to serve. And like I said, I'm over here all the time anyway, so I might as well just be official instead of trying to, to bug the board members on different things with emails, et cetera. Let's see. I think I covered all my notes, even though I kind of jumped around. Public speaking is not my thing. The way I like to look at a problem is, I listen, I research, and those of you who've been on the Architectural Committee with me know, I do a lot of researching, and then I present my point based on facts and references. And that's kind of the way I, what I'd bring to the board. Are there any questions?
Thank you. I think what we'll do is to let Michael speak, and then we'll ask, open it through questions from the floor to either of the two candidates. Michael?
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, everybody, for allowing me to be here tonight. I think it's almost a mute point that I'm running because a name went out with the proxies long before this meeting tonight. So that party, I think it was 130-something people have turned in their proxies, only had one name before them, so I think it's a mute point. However, I'm going to speak my mind. As you know, I was here as a director of maintenance for over eight years. I designed this room, I engineered it, the bathrooms, the game rooms, everything downstairs. We turned all the electrical fixtures in here from regular LEDs. We saved $150,000. I oversaw 130 of the renovations of this place. When I came here, they were giving these places away. Take my keys, I can't afford it. Within one year, we turned the place around from 80% to almost being totally full. We created almost $40 to $50 million in equity for the owners, not me, the team, the management up here at Mount Vernon Tappers. Whenever, I bought my unit very inexpensive. I know some of the two bedrooms were going for $30,000, $40,000 back then. That's a big difference from today. Tommy Miller and I got together, we decided what this place needed, we brought it up to date, we brought it into the 20th century, and we turned it around. I have spoken to Scott recently about a couple of concerns privately, and I think that's how it needs to be, certain things need to be behind closed doors, discussed, and reviewed. I'm not one to boast, but I worked hard. I think I earned the respect of try to turn this place around. My objection was that the name went out long before anybody else was asked to serve on the board. Me or anybody else, whoever get it, you know, I think there's a lot of owners here who are well-qualified. And my concern was making sure that it's not being just handpicked. So with that being said, I'm asking for your vote, which I think is a mute point at this point, but I want to let you know I do have some concerns, which I bring to the management, Scott, the board, and address. Many of the things I did do here, I cut the costs on a lot of the fees here. HVAC were broken, I went to the manufacturer. When we did the lighting in here, we saved over plus to a quarter million dollars by doing it in-house. When we did the chases, I cleaned every chase on this building myself and saved almost $100,000. So it took teamwork, it took management, and I'm very, I have a sharp pencil, and I like to know numbers, and I like to make sure that what I'm spending my money on is well-done. I do have some questions about the chases. I don't want to spend more money than I have to, but I believe in doing what you have to do to prepare for the future. I'm here to support the board any way, shape, or form. I thank the board, you've done a great job over the last few years. We've got, there are some things that need to be worked on, but if you would consider, I'd consider your vote, just because. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the floor of either of the two candidates?
What's Michael's last name?
What is Michael's last name?
Michael Oden.
Michael's last name is Michael Oden.
Mike, I remember you from years ago, and I would personally endorse you, but I have one question. Are you able to work with women?
I've been married 48 years.
All right, do we have any other questions that are on the serious side? Let's hope.
No, I think Susan can probably answer me. I just want to know this gentleman's name. It's Michael what?
Hello, we can't hear you. Can you...
I'm sorry, I just wanted to know his last name.
Michael Macalon.
Could you spell it for me, sir?
Macalon, M-C-A-L-O-N, A-G, Scotch-I.
Thank you.
All right. No further questions, no further, well, you got one back there, okay. Tell us, okay...
I'm Right Hardy, A-508.
Hold the microphone up, right.
You hear me now?
Yes.
I usually have a loud enough voice, you could hear me anyway. I'm Right Hardy, A-508. Michael, I have a question for you from your bio that you sent out. You said you renovated the units here in Mount Vernon Towers. Why were you renovating units when you actually worked for Mount Vernon Towers? The owners should have owned those units and should have been doing their own renovation, I would think.
I have good enough voice. What it was, when we first came here, there was no contractor. Units were quite dated, 20-plus years. I coordinated the vendors for the owners. We took the bench for the owners, and the owners paid for it. We were not, Mount Vernon Towers was not involved in the fund fees or anything, but to pay the vendors, and the bills came through directly for the owners. So I oversaw it, and we went to the owners, we presented what we thought might be a good idea. Owners simply said, yea, nay, I want this, I want that. And we, we basically supervised it and saw through the entire start-to-finish project.
So you supervised individual units while you were actively working for Mount Vernon Towers?
That is correct.
Thank you, Betsy.
Okay, any other questions? Jeff? Susan, you got a, well, take, Jerry, you got it, yeah.
Yeah, I've got a question for Michael, because I'm serving on the Architectural Committee, and we're running to all kinds of issues that are maintenance that was not done over the last 10 years. The chases have water that rains into them because the HVAC units that were replacements were installed in a way that water goes in, water inside any, with an organic material causes a problem that we're dealing with to the $2 and $3.5 million going forward. The, we just got a report on the parking garage, some similar lack of maintenance issues. In fact, maintenance that was done improperly has accelerated deterioration of the, of the parking deck. So I'm looking at this. You were involved in maintenance at a point in time that, we're now getting ready to pay for things that were not maintained properly in the past. The old pay me now a whole lot more than pay me to do it right in the first place. So that would be my, when I read your resume, that was my concern.
The concerns that were just brought up, I myself brought to management... The concerns that were just brought up, I myself brought to management back then. I never controlled the purse strings here. When we first came here, whoever engineered and built this place, the tension bars, as you well know, if you're on the committee, are at the very top of the concrete. They were never built properly from day one. Two, I brought the chase to the management, brought it to their attention. I've brought that to some of the current management. It was here and prior management and board members who are long gone. You know, those were addressed as well, many other items. But there again, at the time, as if you look back on the amount of funds or savings that the company had, going back four or five years, it was very minimal. Those items were addressed, just like with Scott. He'll tell you, you look at the stairwells. We brought engineers out for the cracks going back almost 10 years in the stairwells. I addressed these. Management above me chose not to.
That just seems to be a contradiction. And so, you're talking about cutting, keeping dues down because the funds weren't there. But so, you couldn't do long-term maintenance because the funds weren't there. And yet, you're, and that's how the funds were kept down. So, it's a sort of a contradiction. But I understand, you aren't the decision-maker. You present things, so that I can understand. Yeah.
Okay. We good? We're good. Well, let's go ahead and cast our ballots now. And as we did with the previous ballot, Susan will collect them and bring them forward. So, mark your ballots and we will go through and count those shortly. Thank you. May I have your attention, please? We have the votes in and counted. And the votes are for Diana, 197, for Michael, 40. And we have five abstained. With those in, and we now have a new board member. Thank you, Diana. Thank you, Michael, for your interest. We appreciate that. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Do we have a second? Second? All in favor? Aye. The meeting is now adjourned at 8:38. Thank you for being here. Good night.